I'd like to call this November 4th, 2021, Regular Board of Education Meeting to Order. Mr. Onagastu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Soli?
Mrs. Soli is excused. She is out of town.
Mr. Kropinski?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mrs. Howson?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is our district goals. Our district goals remain academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And as a highlight of some of those, I just want to thank the community for passage of issue 68, which is our renewal levy. It highlights our financial prudence, and we want to again thank the community for their support. We look at those dollars as we are stewards of those dollars. They're not, it's not our dollars, it's the taxpayers' dollars, it's the voters' dollars, and we will continue to spend them wisely. And while I have the time, I want to take an opportunity to congratulate Mrs. Kilbane and Ms. Stovcek on their election to the school board. We have important work, we have satisfying work, and we're looking forward to working together next year. And I'll also send out congratulations to Mr. Carbone, Mr. D'Amio, and Mrs. Kosak on their election to our city council. We look forward to continuing to be good co-partners and collaborating with city council. Next on our agenda is public comment. I have two. Bonnie Tennis is first up. Bonnie, you know the drill. Name and address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Okay, my name is Bonnie Tennis. I'm at 9400 Second Crosswalk Lane. I would like to finish my comment regarding that letters training. Based on Mr. Owen's slide from his presentation on October 7, it looks like it might be very costly to train 90 or more staff members at this time. Strongsville might need it, but not on a large scale like it was needed in Niles District. Mr. Owen said that Strongsville teachers are very good, and when it comes to reading and comprehension, they were able to reach the 83 or 85% mark. Based on those numbers, it's looked like only 15% to 17% student would need the extra attention to bring those students up to the speed. Instead of training the whole staff from K to 3, maybe the district should start slow. Why not simply just train the literacy coaches and few other key members and let them work with that 15% of childrens that needed additional attention? Test it, see it how it works and what works. What works in Niles might not work exactly the same here. Then after that, proceed with additional training if it's needed. There are four days allocated for that training, which would amount to four six-hour session based on that slide. But based on that slide are two units, 24 sessions per unit, and six hours per session. That comes to about 48 days. Teachers and other staff members would be out of service for those days, and substitutes would be needed, which would add to a cost of this training. I have, sorry, but I'm a little bit nervous today. I have another comment, and this comment is about the video that I watched on Strongsville Schools YouTube channel. I felt uncomfortable watching it. It appeared to me as though it was mocking Strongsville residents. I did not appreciate it. The sad thing about that video was that it was created not by students, but by top administrators. Internally, maybe it would be funny to coworkers, but not for the residents, especially for the older generation. What kind of example is that for students? Did any one of the participants ever think about it? Maybe there was some truth in those comments, the feedbacks. Time and money was wasted on this video, being created and for what reason? Just to mock someone and make fun of them? Ask yourself, did the video solve anything? No, actually, it might make residents more angry. This video hit me hard because in 2018, I was treated badly by a previous Board of Education president. As a publicly elected official, I was expecting a better response from him. Instead of saying to me, "Thank you for your comment. We will take this under consideration," which would be good enough for me. I was told that people like me are not wanted in this city, that I should go back to the country I came from, and that I am jealous because I'm not as successful as teachers are. But I was as successful as teachers, and I've been in this country for over 40 years and a Strongville resident for over 30 years. Although he has been in this country longer, I have been a Strongsville resident longer than he was. To my surprise, when I sent an email to all members of the Board of Education and Superintendent about the comment that he made, I did not get response from anyone. Here's what I found on the internet, and how to handle negative comments. These are not my words, but the author. If you run online community service where others are encouraged to participate in their own thoughts, you are sure to come across negative comments. The way you deal with the negative comments can either make or break your online reputation and the reputation of your business. Whatever you do, do not respond to negative comments immediately. Don't ignore the comments. Some negative comments can actually be constructive underneath their offensive surface. Keep your ego in check. It is your duty to respond to these comments as maturely as possible. Be positive. Try to be optimistic about the situation. If the reader claims that its effect, that that effect is incorrect, when you know it's correct, prove it. But do nicely. Agree to disagree. If a reader leaves a particular nasty comment disagreeing with your view or what you posted, the best you can do is agree to disagree and try to get the discussion onto a more productive topic. Acknowledge the reader's opinion and thank them for the comment. While it's never fun receiving negative comments, it is something that you most likely have to deal with at one time or another. By following these tips, you can ensure that you are responding with the utmost grace, class, and maturity. Thank you. And Mr. Kropinski, I am Polish. And to Mr. Miko, Mr. Kropinski's problem with comprehension, it's really not related to Polish language. That's my best. Thank you.
So before you run away, Bonnie, I just want to, I want to, normally, we take public comment as an opportunity to do more listening than speaking. But I'm the only board member who was on the board at the time of the situation that you were referring to. So I'm sorry I didn't respond to you, but as far as I'm concerned, every member of the Strongsville community should feel valuable and should feel that while we may disagree, I want to make sure you'll be heard.
I also emailed the Superintendent.
So regardless, I just wanted to apologize for that, and at any time that we need to talk, I want to make sure that you feel comfortable to address us.
I'm sorry for...
No, it's a very emotional thing, so thank you.
I'm emotional. I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. And next is Beverly Jones. If you would let us know your name and your address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Okay, so I don't have to talk through my forehead? I'm going to lower this a little bit. All right, my name is Beverly Jones. I live at 15134 Camden Circle, Strongsville. Good evening. First thing I want to say to you this evening is that I have been very pleased with Strongsville Schools, okay? And I liken, respect deeply, Dr. Reba. I've watched him work, and I very much respect him. As a retired teacher of 34 years myself, I truly appreciate the teachers in our district and the hard work that they do, and I do understand what they go through. 25 years ago, my husband and I deliberately chose to live in Strongsville, and it was because of the school system. We didn't even have children then, but we chose Strongsville because of that, because we knew what that would mean for the future of whatever children we would have, which we ended up with twins who came to Strongsville, K through 12, and graduated, prepared for college and prepared for life. So I want to appreciate you for giving my children a premier education. I appreciate that. Okay, so I have been satisfied with Strongsville City Schools. We'll start there. However, I'm concerned about something called the Diversity Council, okay? And I hear that it's been in operation for about a year, okay, and in our district, okay? And I want to read a few excerpts from their own statements, okay? And first, I'll read the disclaimer that they put. This Diversity Council has written, "Critical Race Theory, CRT, is not in our state standards, and as previously communicated, we do not teach CRT, nor do we plan to teach CRT. Therefore, CRT will not be a focus of this committee." Okay, I'm great with that. Okay, now I want to read a background statement from the very same council. It says, "Our Diversity Council provides an opportunity for the school district, parents, and our community to collaborate in achieving our mission and focus on our diversity, equity, and inclusion work." Red flags. Let me read another piece that they have out of their own writings. It says, "The current focus for this committee will be to engage in diversity, equity, and inclusion learning activities." Another red flag. Now, these words and many, many others, and I have a list of about 60, and I, that are nationally disseminated, and I'd be happy to, you know, supply you with copies of these, and I have about 20 more separate ones, so about 80 in all, words that are code words and substitutes and alternative words for CRT. And I just read three of them to you twice here, out of their own, out of their own statements. Now, I know this topic is controversial, and I'm not here to bring controversy. Like I said, I love Strongsville Schools, but I want to share why I, as an African-American mother and grandmother, okay, we don't hear this side too much, so I want you to know. I'm African-American, and I'm a mom and a grandma, and, but I'm alarmed at seeing this dangerous ideology infiltrate our schools, and I hope I'm wrong, okay? I don't, as an African-American woman, I don't want our brown and black students to be taught or influenced in any way that they are victims. They are not victims. If they are taught or even influenced that you're a victim, you'll always be a victim, you're teaching them not to even try. If you know it's worthless and senseless to try, you won't even try. So if you fail, we'll just get the standards away. We'll just lower the standards for you. No. And I'm not accusing anybody of doing this, but I'm seeing that the, it could go there, and I want to stop it now before it even gets there. We've heard all the sides about, you know, don't tell our Caucasian children that they're bad and blah, blah, but this side of it is, makes it just as bad or worse to teach them that poor thing, you're a victim, okay? I don't want that either. So I want to pose to you three quick questions, and I don't expect you to answer me tonight, these three questions, because I want to give them to you and let you think about them. I'll be here over and over and over and over and over again, so when you want to answer them, just take your time answering these three questions, but I'm going to give them to you. Number one, why was a Diversity Council formed? Number two, who is on the Diversity Council? Number three, where is the money for the Diversity Council coming from? And like I say, I don't, you know, I'm not going to demand, in fact, I don't want you to give me anything off the cuff. I want to hear from you as we go on and on, do the research, whatever you want to do, and present to us your answers to these three questions, and I'll go over them one more time. Why was the council formed? Who is on the council? And where'd the money come from for the council? And I thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments, Beverly. We have your email address. We'll get you the answers. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is Treasurer's Report. Mr. Onagastu, if you want to address the board, you can fill out a slip and go there, but, but they're public records. Beverly will share them with whoever she wants to share them with, and we'll share them with everyone in the public, and we'll continue the good work that we do. George, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have one discussion item for you tonight. It is the five-year forecast. Last meeting, in last meeting, I did present the budget and the five-year forecast. This time, with the forecast, I trended out the expenditures and revenue. With ODE, the five-year forecast is due twice a year, once at the end of November, and then again, an update in May. So this meeting, we'll have it as a discussion item, and then at the next meeting, it'll be up for vote and then filed to the Department of Education. Last month, when it was presented, it was tied to our budget because our budget is due by September 30, so that was the reason why. For this meeting, materially, the forecast hasn't changed. Revenues are trending up by 91,000, and expenditures down about 718,000, which is less than 1%. What I do want to focus on now is the change of the, first, I want to go review the assumptions one more time, but mainly focus on the state funding formula, as that's brand new for this year, and then kind of go towards the end for the five-year forecast summary. So the five-year forecast of all the district funds, it is just the general fund, which is the main operating fund. The contents of the presentation, which will be posted to the website tomorrow, is the major assumptions, general fund revenue, expenditures, and the summary. So major assumptions for revenue, property taxes, that's our biggest tax, our biggest revenue source. We're assuming a gross collection rate of 98.85%, which is an average of the past three years, and that's extended out for the life of the forecast. Assess valuations. As we're aware, there was a triennial update this year that goes into effect for next year, and it'll increase the residential values by 15% and the commercial values by 5%. As I stated last meeting, the misconception is because of the valuation change, the district's going to receive more revenue. That's not the case, as there's House Bill 920, which, as values go up, effective rates change to adjust for any increases. So as, as values go up, the effective rate will come down too, and sure, we're still collecting the same amount of money. People's individual taxes might, residents' individual taxes might change based on their individual impact, depending where you are compared to the city average. So the city average was 15% for residential. If, if you're at 10%, your taxes are likely going to go down. However, if you had 20%, your taxes are probably going to go up by 5%. Within property tax, there is an adjustment for pending border revisions. Complaint with the MAU, as the MAU sold last earlier in the calendar year, it was valued at $881 million, and it sold for $57 million. So there is a pending case and a refund is, is included in the forecast as well. That amount of the refund that's estimated is about $2.3 million. And then I was able to update, as you mentioned earlier, thank you to the community, that, and this, the other day, the residents renewed a five-year six-mill levy with the collections will begin in January 2023, and then the forecast assumes that the levy will expire in December 31, 2026, and then collections will continue through December 31 of 2027. And then we also have the other renewal that was first approved in May 2019, where residents approved a five-year 5.9 mill levy with collections beginning in January 2020. The levy will expire in tax year 2023, and collections will run through December 31, 2024. So state funding, this is where I want to focus most of my presentation. Beginning with fiscal year '22, the state funding is calculated based on the Fair Funding Formula that was approved for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 state biennial budget under House Bill 110. I am going to switch over. There was a supplement handout that was at your, at your seat, so I'll put that on the screen to kind of walk through the new funding So the funding is driven by base cost methodology that incorporates the four components identified as necessary to the education process. The base cost is currently calculated for two years using a state year average from historical actual data. So the base cost is in effect, that's here, that's in effect for this biennial budget, which is fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. Based on the formula, the, our base cost is 37.5 million for fiscal year '22, and the four components of the base cost are district classroom instruction of 21.6, instructional and student support of 5.3, building leadership and operation 8.2, leadership and accountability of 2.3, and then of that total base cost, about 78% is estimated for personnel-related costs. Where these numbers came from, these aren't our numbers. So what the base cost is, is the formula looks at your enrollment, and it takes how many certain positions you need for those, based on that enrollment. So how many teachers you would need, how many administrators, and so on, and then it calculates it based on an average salary statewide. So it's not, this number's not individualized for Strongsville. It is based on our enrollment, but it's using statewide averages. So Cuyahoga County, it's somebody's costs are a little bit lower compared to a more rural district, but just with the change in this formula, it identifies those, those costs versus the previous formula did not. So that was one of the big changes with this formula, is how much does it cost to educate a pupil? So the next step is, once the base cost is determined, is taking a total base cost per pupil. So of the total base cost of 37.5 million, which was shown above, and with enrollment of 5,176, the total per pupil base cost is $7,236, based on that base cost. And then also, I'll also want to clarify enrollment. The enrollment figure's 5,176. If you look at our enrollment on our website, the actual ODE counts, it's closer to 5,500. The difference is, is how it's being used for funding. This is K-12, where our numbers are pre-K to 12. It is also taking full-day kindergarten, and it's only funding full-day kindergarten at 50%. So it's not the entire full-day kindergarten, which we count. And then also, we count the kids that go to a JVS such as Polaris as one. The state funds them at 20%, or the time, depending on how they're split. If majority of their time is at Polaris, then it's 80% Polaris, 20% Strongsville, but if it's a 50/50 split, then they're split accordingly. So that's, that's where the 5,176 is coming from, which is less than the enrollment figure you might see on our website. Then the next step is breaking down that cost per pupil, the funding formula does. So it takes a state share index, and that state share index was in place in the previous formula, so same concept. It's looking at wealth of the school district, and when it's taken wealth, it's looking at property values and taxpayer income, combining those together compared to averages across the state on how, where the district falls. For us, the total base cost is 7,236. Our local share is 6,874, which is about 95% of the total base cost, and the state share per pupil is $362. So what that equates to is about 5%. So of the total base costs and the, per funding per pupil, the funding formula is funding us about 5%. And then this, the next page shows a chart, year over year, of the base costs. The base cost on this chart is more than the previous chart, and the reason for the increase, this also adds in any categorical funding. Special education students get additional funding, ELL students get additional funding, gifted students get additional funding. So this, that's all taken into consideration on this chart. So the base cost increases with the categorical funding to $42.9 million through 2026. It will increase based on inflation and costs to about $46.6 million. The total per cut, the total per pupil base cost is about $7,236 for the current fiscal year, and it'll increase the same, the same percentage as the base cost did to 2026, to 7,830. And again, it's the, we're funded at the state share index of the 5%, so it's going to increase from $362 to $392. So any questions so far? So moving on to the next page. Another big change in the funding formula is, is the previous funding formula is funded for ADM, which stood for Average Daily Membership. Now, this formula is funding for district educated enrollment, and the biggest change there is the ADM included kids that went to community schools, kids that were on autism scholarship that went to a private school, and kids that were on the Peterson Scholarship that also went to private schools. So, and then those dollars showed up in our revenue, and then they also showed up as an out in our expenses. That pass-through is now gone. Those schools are funded directly. Also, what included open enrollment out, we had about $170,000 that went out for open enrollment. Those are, those calculations are now out of the formula, and those district, those other districts get the funds directly. So it's going to show a decrease of, compared to previous formulas, the enrollment decrease. So fiscal year '21, last fiscal year 2021, our ADM was 5,555, or 5,555 students versus district educated of 5,169. And how it impacts expenses, all those outs equated to about 2.4 in expenses, which showed up in purchased services. So when you compare the forecast or financials from last year to this year, you're going to see expenditures decrease under purchased services, and this is for the reason why. Open enrollment out was 168,000, community schools was 1.5 million, the autism scholarship was 257,000, and the Peterson Scholarship was 400,000. Overall, close to 2.4 million. That same impact, we're going to see on revenues. Revenues, state revenues last year was 9.4. State revenues under the new formula total, about 7.9. So revenues are going to show a $1.5 million decline because of that. The net impact overall, if we take the expenditures that came out because of that, of the 2.4, also the student wellness funds, those were in a separate fund last year. Now they're restricted funds in the general fund, so adding those expenses in of $250,000, the net impact on expenditures is 2.1 million. So the net impact between the lower revenues and the lower expenditures were favorable by $590,000. So we're coming out about, close to $600,000 ahead.
And according to the, to the plan that the legislature has to roll that in, that impact will grow?
Yeah, it's going to continue to increase, but I'll show you where on the next few pages. So this next slide has a lot of numbers on it, and it gets real weedy. I'm just going to go to the bottom line. Again, in the previous forecast, or the previous funding formula, the district was heavy on the guarantee. Again, with this funding formula, the district is going to be heavy on the guarantee. Again, with this funding formula, the district is going to be heavy on the guarantee, so we are considered a guaranteed district. The good thing is with the guarantee, the guarantee is based on fiscal year twenty-twenty funding, net of all the ins and outs for those others, for the other students that went to other schools. That is written into law. So in order for the guarantee to change, the, there has to be a new funding formula. So that is a benefit to us this time, compared to last time, we were always on jeopardy of what could happen with the guarantee. But however, as our valuations increase and our base funding increase, the amount on the guarantee is going to continue to grow through the life of the forecast. Our bottom line will stay the same, but the amount that we're on the formula versus guarantee is going to grow. So moving on to the next page, the fun, the summary results of the funding formula. The, the current year's funding is six point three million, and if you go across this top line, it's going to stay, it's going to stay consistent year after year. Where we're going to grow is transportation funding, is this line that I'm highlighting here. So right now, under the new formula, the transportation funding is, is at a state minimum fifty percent. We're currently below that state minimum of fifty percent. We're at twenty-nine percent. And each year, there's a phase in to get you to that fifty percent. So each year, as it's growing, it's phasing in, and then that's where our bottom line is continuing to grow, is because of the transportation phase in. So we're currently at twenty-nine percent. In twenty-twenty-six, we'll be about forty-seven percent. So around twenty-twenty-seven, we should be, if the, if this funding formula continues, is, does exist at that time, we'll be at that fifty percent. And then the next few pages show, are charts showing the changes in revenue. So if this were your twenty-twenty-one, our actual state funding revenue is nine point four. This year, you'll see a decline of, to seven point nine, but the decline is because of those students that went to other schools or not, not included in the pass-through. And then this chart shows the phase in for the transportation. So this amount, so about eight hundred thousand for fiscal year twenty-two is not included in our forecast. That's that phase in amount that's not included. So each year, that continues to decrease. Then on this chart here, our guarantee continues to increase on the flip side. These bottom chart, these bottom charts, they don't, for our district, they don't impact us much. This is the, this chart to the bottom left is DPIA funding. We receive about forty-six thousand of it. Forty-six thousand funds, and it's primarily used to pay the police officers, the SROs that we have, but it's consistent year after year. And then this bottom chart was an adjustment that I made to the revenue, which for this year was nine thousand dollars. That came out of our state aid for fiscal year twenty-two, but it was a fiscal year twenty-one adjustment at the state. And then the next two charts, again, show the, show the comparison to the revenue from last year to this year. And then same thing with the tuition out expenses. We went from three point six million to one point five for fiscal year twenty-two. And then the amounts that are here now, the one point five, is for private school tuition for the special education settlements and college, college credit plus and excess costs that we paid other districts. And then the last, just for numbers sake, it's a guarantee analysis, kind of shows the guarantee to, how it's growing year after year. In order for us to get off the guarantee and go to the formula, it's really shifting buckets, but it's either one, become a poor city, which hopefully that doesn't happen, or two, this line shows here how many more kids we would need to get off the guaranteed, so we would need to inquire another district our sides. So that concludes the state funding formula. So any questions on that? I know there was a lot, but those were kind of the components of it.
I would just share that what I think this highlights, the way I describe the previous funding formula, is it was extremely complicated, and then there was a ton of voodoo that was added to it. It's now extremely complicated with less voodoo. Things like not having to have the in-and-out funds, and those of you who have listened to me over the years know that always stuck in my craw that they would credit us the, the full boat of six thousand dollars of, of revenue, and that, I'm sorry, they would credit us the fifteen hundred dollars of revenue, but they would deduct the full six thousand dollar per head amount. That's what I mean by, by the voodoo. Those kinds of things have been removed from the budget. Ultimately, the state legislature has to commit every two years to continue to phase this fair funding in. And when it's finally phased in, it will remain complicated, but hopefully the voodoo will be out of it. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
The one thing I forgot to mention before I wrapped up is with the state funding, there's restricted fund. So of that total, there's a portion that's restricted, and it needs to be spent for those purposes. So for fiscal year twenty-two, our restricted funds are about five hundred sixty thousand. Of that total, the breakout is two hundred and fifty thousand is for student wellness and success funds. Those were given last year and, and the past few years, and they were in another fund. Now they're part of the general fund and not in that fund. So it's two hundred fifty thousand that we have to meet that spending requirement, and there are certain categories that those are spent for. And what we're currently using them for is for a social worker, guidance counselor, mental health services, and then also the diversity, the diversity consultant that we have as well. Then the next phase is thirty-six thousand dollars for the college career tech. That was in there before with the old funding formula, around the same amount. The DPIA, that was before as well, and those are being used to, we're meeting the spending requirement for the SROs. And then the new portion that's restricted is, that wasn't there before, is for gifted services of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And before this requirement, we were, we're meeting that definition as well with the gifted teachers that we have. And then continuing with the assumptions, and I'm almost, I'm almost done. Continuing with the assumptions, the general fund includes about six hundred seventy-eight positions, which is an increase of nine from the prior year. Next year, six hundred and eighty-five, and twenty-twenty-three, it's six eighty-eight. And it's based on changes from personnel coming off certain grants to the, to the general fund. Staffing is based on current union agreements, healthcare increased, healthcare premiums increased by three percent in twenty-one, and we're experiencing a one point three seven percent in twenty-two, and for twenty-three to twenty-six, the forecast is assuming a percent increase. And then during fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, the district experienced cost savings in certain categories due to the closures of substitute costs over time, associated benefits that are a percentage of salaries, certain purchased services due to school closures. And as district resumes normal operations, those benefits will be restored. And then purchase services is forecasted decrease by the one point, by one point five, by one point five million, and primarily it's due to the items that we talked about. So I am going to, now, the charts for each category are there. They didn't significantly change from the last time. I am going to go to the end to the forecast summary unless anyone wants me to go to a specific chart.
Do you have a drum roll?
So this is the five-year forecast summary. So in total, we're projecting revenues, or carryover cash from last year was fifty-three point one million. Revenues was eighty-one point six, expenditures were, are forecasting to be seventy-five point six, and revenues over expenditures, that's six million. Overall, the unencumbered balance for the end of this year, fifty-seven million. And in the out years, on the first chart, I was, with the passage of the current renewal levy, I was able to move that to the top. We still have the one renewal levy that's going to expire in collection year twenty-twenty-four, which is fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. So moving those revenues to the bottom, without that levy, we would start deficit spending. But if that levy were to pass, we would be positive throughout the life of the forecast. So any questions?
It feels good to move the amounts to above the line.
It did.
And that was, that we weren't able to do until we got the results on Tuesday, so that's really good news, and congratulations, and thank you. Any questions for George? Thank you, George.
Thanks. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you again, George. Next is superintendent's report. Dr. Iba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. We've got Lauren coming up. She's going to give a presentation on our gifted learning services in the district. So just as a reminder, last month, we had Aaron and Steve and Amy here to talk about the letters training and elementary curriculum. And this month, we asked Lauren to be here. So one of the things we wanted to do is highlight how are utilizing our funding from the new ESAR dollars, the federal dollars that we've received. A coordinator of gifted and testing is one of those positions that we've added. Again, when we take a look at the ESAR funds, we have to take a look at how are they being utilized to support the pandemic, support gaps in student learning. We've done that through all aspects of education, and so one of them is our gifted learners. So Lauren is here. She's, as you know, she's brand new to our district this year, and we're thrilled to have her. So she can do a little introduction of herself. And then you have the slides in front of you to give you some highlights of what's, what's been on the plate so far this year. So Lauren, you're up.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I have no problem chatting about myself for a little bit. So as Dr. Iba said, I am Lauren Scata, and been here three months now, and it's been a wonderful experience. Everybody has been so warm and welcoming, so I appreciate that. I had previously taught in Fairview Park City Schools for quite a while as the gifted intervention specialist there, and then more recently, worked with NASA and still continue to do a little bit of STEM curriculum with them. So it's just a wonderful and enjoyable experience. So thank you for the opportunity.
We're all very interested in more on NASA.
Well, it's like, you know, very hidden city, so I live in Rocky River, so I pass it every day, but unfortunately, it's only mission-critical people right now. So as much as I'd love to give you a tour, I'm not that important quite yet, but one day.
We'll be patient.
Okay. So this evening, we are going to talk a little bit about the progress and themes from the first ninety days. And the different topics we'll discuss are building adult capacity and refining processes, student impact, which is a very exciting area, and then future endeavors and goals. So in starting off, building adult capacity in the refining processes, so this is something that benefits all of our classrooms. So our gifted learners, learners as well as our general education population. So this is done through encouraging growth through professional development opportunities, through research, through different supports that we are offering to all of our students, and ensuring that those processes are really refined and understood, which will bring a greater depth to all of our educators and all of our teachers throughout the district. So one area that we started with was professional development, and this actually started from day one back in August with our gifted intervention specialists. So really mirroring what the district is already doing. So last month, when Mrs. Penny talked a little bit about how depth of knowledge is really where we're focusing our goal and our vision for this year, we wanted to make sure we parallel that with our gifted intervention specialists too, and really working with our gifted learners. So DOK is wonderful in the fact that it seamlessly works with our gifted learners in application and the relevance in raising the thinking level of our students very easily and very effectively. So we discussed DOK levels and how those can really be applicable when we are teaching our gifted learners, and especially our gifted intervention specialists as they pull out our students from math in grades three through five. So we focus our area on those content standards. Here's an example here. So we took a standard for third grade of solving real-world and mathematical problems involving perimeter and how it kind of extends, finding an unknown side length, and exhibiting rectangles with the same perimeter in different areas. This is an area that our gifted learners do very well in. So as you can see here, we talked about the different levels. So DOK level one, all the way up to DOK level four. Now, for our gifted learners, we really want to include that complexity and depth of content. So we're trying to make sure that they really get to that level three and that level four. So how could we take this standard, deconstruct it, understand what, what it actually means? And our gifted intervention specialists took the time, we looked at the vocabulary of it, really deconstructed what each of those areas within the standard meant, and then were, applied it to all those different DOK levels that we could easily apply it, and they'd be able to start with some of those resources. And how this is great too, is that a lot of our gifted intervention specialists have what's called a consulting time within their schedule. So they have a lot of our general education teachers that go to them and ask for different supports or resources. So in turn, understanding the standard even more so, and being able to create these different DOK levels and the higher depth and complexity really supports all of our learners, and it's just a really great experience for all. We also had some really great aha moments. So looking at the model curriculum is something that is not, you know, as often done by teachers, and I think that we found a lot of value in seeing how the model curriculum really helps support the standard, and really being able to take easy, simple, you know, taking things from maybe a closed concept to more of an open question in turn, helping our, and supporting that rigor and relevance. We'll continue this process as the year goes on with different professional development opportunities that we're having for our gifted intervention specialists.
And so Lauren, in, in terms of gifted intervention specialists, well, I know our board members know, but for folks, so we have, why don't you explain gifted intervention specialists, you said, through through fifth map, whether.
Yeah, so we have one GIS or one gifted intervention specialist at each of our five elementary schools. And years ago, from what, you know, I've gathered that one of the areas that we found would be most applicable and using our resources the most with our gifted intervention specialists was to service them in math. You know, just making sure that we provide that deeper enrichment, and then that they would be able to help support in the other content areas as our general education teachers need it. So, you know, really, really nice to be able to have that for each of our school buildings. Another professional development session that we did was breaking down the data from the standards. So this was really nice because not only were we able to look at, as you can see on the bottom here, the district, a district standard and how our students performed in the district, but then we broke it apart and looked specifically at our data for our gifted students, which I think is very important for our gifted intervention specialists and all to see. This is just one example. So I will say, most of our examples, our students did very well, but I did want to bring attention to one area that we really focused on. So you can see here vertically, it goes from the third grade standard to the fourth grade standard to the fifth grade standard. And third and fourth grade, our gifted students performed very well, so relatively similar, eighty-six percentile in third grade, and then eighty-fifth percentile in fourth grade. So really, you know, for the most part, understanding those concepts, and then we see that dip. So forty-eighth percentile in fifth grade, and we thought, oh, gosh, you know, this is an area we, we need to support, and we need to figure out what happened here. So we took, you know, a decent amount of time kind of collaborating, discussing it, and seeing, you know, how the depth and complexity just increased in that standard. So you can see in third grade, it talks more about interpreting products. Again, in fourth grade, interpreting a multiplication. So you're, you have a verb, but it's not that intense. And then you get to fifth grade, and it's now the application of it. So using those parentheses and applying that skill. So we took that apart, again, using that vision of what our kind of common goal is for the entire year, and deconstructed that standard. Looked at those vocabulary words. What do our students really need to know, what and how can we teach it to better support them? Because even though they might be gifted, we do know that we do support them. So if there are areas that there might be a struggle or that we're seeing some inconsistencies, what can we do in order to do, to help support them even more? So we had some great conversations surrounding it. We looked at some resources that provided some sample tasks, progressions, and assessments in order to support that standard. And then we realized that we needed to really hone in on some deeper problem-solving strategies and inquiry-based thinking. So they started to think about how they could use Google Slides in order to do it, or different types of activities to supplement it to ensure that we are really, you know, helping to support this standard. Some observations and feedback. So this is kind of exciting. I've been able to I've been able to watch and observe some of our teachers, our gifted intervention specialists. So why this is unique is because in the past, our principals have been the one to, to give the feedback to our gifted intervention specialists for their observation cycles. So this year, I've been doing their formal and informal observations of our gifted intervention specialists according to their OTEST cycle. And it's a great opportunity where, you know, we've had a great collaboration. We've had pre-conferences and we've also been able to have some coaching sessions. So what I will kind of put in there is some things called consider. So consider doing it this way, or what can we consider doing to further it? So one area that we really honed in and talked about was math talk. And math talk is so important to that collaboration. You know, students enjoy talking and being able to collaborate with each other, but let's make sure that it's actually important. So we talked about some ways that the teacher can model that. So asking those what questions, how are you getting to that? What can I better help you understand? And having the students be responsible for that math talk within their groupings. Some updated, oh.
Going back to the pro dev slide.
Which, this one?
Yes, the one.
Oh, yes.
So we did the pro dev. How do we, how do you measure whether it's making it in the classroom?
So while, based on this, they were able to take sample test questions from previous OST. So we looked at, you know, how five, specifically this standard, five OA one was asked and what types of questions in the OST. So they have created different exit tickets where they're doing that with students. So not only this standard, but other ones as well. And then seeing how, after they've implemented a lot of these kind of problem-based strategies or inquiry, inquiry-based thinking through Google Slides or different activities, how after they do the exit ticket, so just like a quick check, formative assessment, how the students are doing in regard to that. And then we'll, you know, check back in and make sure that this is something that they're really actually understanding based on that. So, you know, quick four or five question quiz that they're doing. You know, and if we see, if this gifted intervention specialist see that it's still not getting it, then how can we help revise and how can we help support them in a different way? So maybe it's, you know, the way that it's being explained, or maybe we even need to think about the student's learning style, you know, visually or auditory, or how we are as teachers presenting it to make sure that, you know, you don't want to teach to a test, but seeing how it is on the test that they're able to be able to apply those skills to. So quick checks, making sure that the understanding is there and then revising as needed.
So that feedback is almost not immediate. I mean, it's this year.
It is.
So I should expect.
Fingers crossed, yeah, and in the spring.
We do need to be able to say, I should expect it versus, no, this is gonna take two years to get out it, you know, into the soil, so to speak.
Definitely.
Expect to see the results of our work on the next state standard test.
We should in the spring, correct, yeah.
Well, even closer than that, I mean, if you take a look at the process that's implemented, the teachers will know within the classroom learning cycle as to where students are and what need. That's what Lauren's sharing is, you know, it's like anything. Here's what we're gonna teach. We're gonna gather information on what students know and are able to do and what skills they've developed. And then we're gonna modify our instructional practices based on whether they've got it or whether they don't, whether that's small groups or individuals or the whole class. So, so yes, the key is we should have a good pulse as to where students are in terms of their skills. And then obviously, can they apply it on the, the main test at the end of the year? But there should not be surprises, you know, moving forward.
And, and, you know, it's, I think it's very important. I think it was very eye-opening for everybody too, to see that these are specific areas. There aren't many, but the ones that are, we do need to make sure that we're, we're addressing.
Lauren, I have a question. It's not specific to any of this, but I think it's important, maybe if you know, I know Cameron, you have it somewhere. You've shared it with the board. I think it's important for the public to know how many students we're actually serving, because the number is quite high. And if you have it, or if you have it, if you can break it down, elementary versus everybody else, that would be helpful, if not today at some point.
Okay.
Because I think the number is important and it's higher than I think people think it is. So Lauren has a big job ahead of her and, and we're glad you're here.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, so in total, we have, this year, we have eight hundred and seventy-five learners that are identified as gifted. So that's fifteen and a half percent of our students. And so if you break down that equally, but, you know, we can get the specific grade levels and share all the bands, but that's what we have as a district.
So in addition, some updated and simplified processes. So one area was the early entrance refinement. So we had processes in place, but just making sure that was refined and that we were able to give as much applicable information to families. That is a big decision to consider your child going early entrance to either first grade or kindergarten. So in this guide, and it's now, it's on the website as well for parents to be able to see. So in this guide, it now includes expectations from Ohio Department of Education, which kind of talks about what your child will be expected of in kindergarten. You know, not only academically, but also social, emotionally and behaviorally, and making sure that the whole child is taken into consideration. A flow chart that goes over the process that will be described to the parents so that they understand thoroughly what's happening. And then also implementing a meet, kind of a meet and greet with me before we continue the process or before they get the application. As I think it's very important to be able to talk with families, answer any questions, get their thoughts as this, you know, does create a trajectory for their child for the rest of their career. The other document is the identification and service information. So this was just kind of a consolidation. We had a lot of links on our website for our gifted learners and a lot of duplication. So just making sure that it's in one easy place for parents to be able to see any updates that we needed and just, you know, a kind of a nicer view of the documentation that we have. And then one other area is the referral process. So we had a referral process in place where our teachers or our family members would print it off and then fill in the information and either have to mail it in or scan it. So, you know, while that's not a horrible process, there's always ways that we can improve. So putting this as a Google form made it a lot easier and simplified for teachers and our families to be able to refer their child for gifted testing. And from what I told, I'm told, we had a record number of referrals this past fall. So, you know, it was great to be able to see that many, many students that were referred for gifted testing.
And Lauren, just to, just to clarify, when we say we have eight hundred and seventy-five learners that are gifted, these are established criteria based on assessments. It's not the district determining, hey, this kid should be gifted or not.
Correct, yes. So that is Ohio Department of Education. That is not a Strongsville specific. So Ohio Department of Education provides instruments and assessment tools that we are to use. And, you know, I'll get into a little bit deeper into the, the different testing tools that we use in the next couple of slides. And then they tell us the exact number that a student has to get in order to be identified. And then, you know, there's also something called a screener. So if they're within a certain range of the gifted identification, then we provide one more opportunity for the student using a different instrument to see if they can meet that criteria. So it's normally the ninety-fifth percentile for our reading and math identification in a subject area. And then we also have something called the COGAP for our superior cognitive. And those scores, depending on your grade, normally range between one twenty-seven and one hundred and twenty-eight for a student. But yes, all dictated from Ohio Department of Education, not a specific Strongsville specification. Some other areas is, that were updated and simplified. This was more for gifted intervention specialists, just for their ease, so our written education plan. So this got an overhaul and kind of an update for them with it being an easier to re-document for fillable and then a little clearer for them so that they didn't have to continuously save it. So just kind of ease of time for them. And then Ohio Department of Education has recommended for a social emotional learning standard. It's not required, but they did provide a deep recommendation for those students that are served through a gifted intervention specialist to include it, especially in light of COVID with, you know, a lot of social emotional issues that could and can arise from that. So we have implemented that this year and our gifted intervention specialist created a goal for our students based on what the school is currently doing with their pride or their PBIS. The IAAT process is something that our curriculum department is helping to refine a little bit. So the IAAT is the Iowa Algebra Aptitude Test. Say that like five times fast. So we streamlined the process and this is more for our middle school students and seeing their math trajectory and which courses they would be taking. So what we're going to really work on is answering questions with the parents. We have a presentation that is in the winter that we will do and informing the parents of where their child has placed and making sure that they understand all the requirements that will continue on for their child if they decide to go in that math trajectory. And then the, a family newsletter. So this was, you know, some, something kind of nice and fun. And this went out last week to our families. So it's our inaugural family newsletter, I guess. And this included articles, some resources and information along with community activities for students and families for all of our K-12 learners. So of course, I threw in a little NASA competitions that students could do or an intervention convention and some different activities that were at the metro parks and library that could be of interest for them. One other area that was updated and simplified is our transition period. So when we have students who are considered accelerated, either a whole grade acceleration, meaning they skip a grade and/or a single subject acceleration, meaning they, most likely math, maybe they're in fifth grade and they take a sixth grade math program, we have a transition period, usually six to eight weeks. So this is required by law in order to make sure that we have this. But we kind of upped the ante a little bit and made sure that we were providing that weekly communication with our homeroom teachers and the gifted intervention specialists and the gifted coordinator and really frequently checking in with our families. So any questions that they had, resources. And then we created a new Google form for our teachers to fill out. So that way, it got sent to us every Friday, able to look over it. And if there was any concerns, they were addressed immediately with all parties that needed to. So it's, I think it's been really effective and nice to be able to have that quality conversations and collaboration with all. And then testing oversight. So the other part of my job, I'm not only gifted coordinator, but I'm also testing coordinator. So these are just a few of the tests that I help to oversee and/or help administer. So the COGAP, which we previously talked about, is for identification for our superior cognitive students, the Ohio State tests, the Iowa assessments, which focus in on subject-specific like math or reading, gifted identification, again, the Iowa Algebra Aptitude Test, and then the Terranova. So that would be an assessment piece that if a child on our Iowa assessment was in that screening range where they didn't quite make it to that ninety-fifth percentile, but were a few, a couple of points away, then we would provide them another opportunity for the Terranova. Next is student impact, which is one of my, my favorite. I think it's very important. So this is definitely in supporting all of our students. So collaboration and resources. So, so far, I have been, had the opportunity to meet with some of our ELA teachers at Strongville Middle School. So our sixth, seventh and eighth grade teachers, our general education teachers, as well as our ELA honors teachers. And we've had some really great discussions and also the literacy coaches were there. So some really great discussions, just ideas, concerns, where can we take this? What, what do you see the difference between our general education versus our honors classes? And how can me and everyone and our literacy coaches better help support them in kind of finding that good balance between the two classes? So in continuation, some of the processes that came about from it was to provide professional development for them and really sticking in with the overview and goal and vision of the district, of the depth of knowledge, being able to look at their standards and being able to apply it to a higher level to make sure we're meeting our, all of our students' needs, and specifically at the honors level. And then this upcoming week and the following week, I'll be meeting with ninth and tenth grade ELA teachers that teach our honors and again, providing that professional development opportunity with them. Some other areas that's been able to work with in collaboration and resources is some enrichment for our solo, solo students. So creating some choice boards for them for K through twelve that are more specifically within the grade band, so K two grade level, three through five, and making sure we're getting through all facets, so they're more stream-related, but having that inquiry-based, critical thinking that families are able to do at home, as well as some choice boards for our gifted intervention specialists, and then an ever-growing resource page for our third through fifth grade teachers in our general education classroom. So there's activities and independent projects that they can provide for their reading students or their superior cognitive students, or even students who are bright, that they'd really like to help support in different ways within the classroom. So it's continuation of some really great healthy resources. Makerspace curriculum that I've helped support and create for our elementary students for their enrichment time, as well as some literature circles curriculum developed for our K through three students, which has been completed during their IE time as well. And IE time is their intervention or enrichment time. And this is something exciting. So we have our first, first math contest. So for our third grade students with our gifted intervention specialists. So we are starting with third grade, seeing how it goes. So Novatic Math Contest. It's a national contest, so it is designed to promote students' problem solving and their math skills. And it will be running from November eleventh through tw- twenty-fourth, so very soon. Our gifted intervention specialists are considered the leaders of their team. And what they get every week, they get a problem of the week, a critical thinking problem, and they're going to, you know, put it up in, up on their board and see how students do and talk about it at the end of the week. And it's really great for, you know, their problem solving skills, their math interests, their critical thinking. And I know, you know, everyone seems to be pretty excited about it. So see how, see how we do. Another area is the Second and Seventh Foundation. So this is a nonprofit organization and it provides books for second grade students. So we participated in it and I worked with the athletic department this year. And we were able to have all of our spots filled up. So we had a student athlete who was a great peer role model go to our second grade classrooms. And this is great to promote important literacy, literacy skills and then see a lot of our students, you know, where they can strive to be when they get to high school and seeing that great peer role model for them. So we had that completed in October. And you can see here, just a little, a teacher kind of, you know, mentioned how she wanted to thank everybody and what a great experience it was and how students were thoroughly engaged in it. And they can't wait for future reading sessions. So they, we actually have one more coming up in the spring. And then the students, based on this grant from our Second and Seventh Foundation, they get to keep two books. So they get to take them home too, which is really nice. And then an area that I'm exceptionally excited for is some lessons with the gifted intervention specialists. So in chatting with them and having a lot of our professional development collaboration sessions, we noted that would be really nice if I was able to go into some of their classrooms. So one of the areas that we talked about was using technology, so the Ozobots. And, you know, you can kind of see the picture here, so there's a little coding. So one of the gifted intervention specialists and I talked about, she has a third grade lesson coming up in division. And, you know, kind of not the most exciting lesson, but how can we kind of up the ante a little bit and using that technology piece to kind of get a little more engaging and providing that real-life application? So creating a maze that students would have to travel through in order to get through it and have the division problems and then creating their own for other students to be able to solve their maze too. So not only being able to do the skills on their own, but then applying it and being able to have other students do it too. Math centers, supporting those, as well as some math games and enrichment, and then using that Makerspace curriculum within their lessons to increase their critical thinking skills. And then lastly, is future endeavors and goals. So a lot of, a lot of goals and things that we are looking forward to in the future, you know, they might, some of them are on the trajectory for this year and then some of them are in future years that we would like to move forward with. So one of the areas is upcoming professional development and specifically with our gifted intervention specialists. So this year, we are spending a day working and discussing math curriculum discussion. So overall, as a district, we do have an upcoming discussion for adoption of a new math program or potentially the same, depending on, you know, what teachers decide. But I wanted our gifted intervention specialists to be able to have our own conversation in regard to this. So how can we either provide a different math curriculum that would support their needs or a supplemental math curriculum that would be able to, you know, make sure that we are meeting their needs and it has that rigorous content for them? And then working on the creation of some common math assessments too, to make sure that when we are looking at that data, that we have that high-quality data piece that they're all using to be able to collaborate and discuss. Another area that we recently did was a book discussion for math challenges to support higher-level thinking and rigor. So the, it's called The Book of Perfectly Perilous Math. It's more specifically for fifth grade students and even higher, but it has some really great kind of me, good. But it has some really great kind of me, good, engaging activities and project-based learning that really create that critical thinking, that higher level skills. So we've been looking at that and then our gifted intervention specialists have been sharing and collaborating with each other of how they're incorporating that within their classrooms. And then lastly, the 16 Habits of the Mind. So this goes along with social emotional learning. So the 16 Habits of the Mind is really understanding how people learn. And we know that our gifted learners really have some great and unique characteristics such as perfectionism, sometimes impulsivity, overexcitability, persisting. But how can we really support them in using those in a positive way and incorporating them within their learning?
Cameron, what's our timeframe for the math curriculum adoption?
It'll go throughout this school year. So, you know, they'll be looking at different materials and then usually they're all a little bit different. But early spring, the curriculum review.
It'll come to the board.
Come to this board for this year for next year's implementation.
Surprise.
Not that math programs aren't a hot topic.
Right, right.
Surprise, that's what you guys are doing.
Lauren, I have a question. When you said the book discussion, so all the gifted intervention specialists read the same book and then worked on, talked about it and then applied it to their classroom.
Correct, yeah. So we haven't read the entire thing because it's kind of, it's how it's grouped. It has different projects within it. And so right now we took apart the first project and whatever gifted intervention specialist created, actually they created on Google Classroom and then shared it out and we talked about it and then they were able to use it in their classroom. So it'll, yeah, it'll be throughout the entire year, but it's been really nice.
Cool, thank you.
Another area is professional development in middle school and high school. While I've had the opportunity to work with our ELA, I want to make sure I get in there for all content areas to make sure that we're utilizing the depth of knowledge for standards and deeper learning and then differentiation of levels of the courses. So making sure that the depth of which students are engaging with the content is appropriate for them. And then some future staff professional development, ensuring that we make sure that we're working with all of our teachers. So these are some areas and topics that I would like to work with all of our teachers and general education teachers and our gifted intervention specialists and helping to support. So differentiation, so really incorporating those strategies for teaching our gifted students in the regular classroom and how we can make sure that we're meeting their needs. Learning and thinking styles. So this is an important one because we want to make sure that we are honing in. You know, we all know that we learn in different ways and how can we make sure that we are applying it and making sure as teachers that we are, we are getting where we need to with our students. So having those discussions to better support our students based on those learning and thinking styles. Social emotional learning, so understanding the social emotional needs of our gifted students and addressing the impact of those needs and their academics. PBLs are incorporating project-based learning, which really helps promote that rigor and relevance. STEAM, so we all know, science, technology, engineering, art and math. That's a wonderful way to just very easily, excitably and engaging create critical thinking skills, project-based learning and that deeper DOK. And then a book study, so working through a book such as Teaching Gifted Kids in Today's Classroom. Might even be a podcast and/or a video that we'd be able to relate to and be able to kind of go through that study together. Some future family involvement, so learning opportunities such as guest speakers that were, that focus on gifted learning topics, a book study with family members, meet and greet not only with the staff, but also within the entire district. So I think it's very important that we can learn from each other as families. And then continuing that newsletter and that offerings for our families as well. And then lastly, some future competitions and activities for exploration. So these are just a few ideas that I had. I actually am in a virtual meetup with two gifted coordinator groups in Ohio, which has been wonderful to be able to speak and learn, especially across the state. And a lot of, more recently, one of the areas that we talked about was some different competitions and different contests that we could really help to promote for our students. So these were some of the ideas that we talked about. And, you know, we're going to look into it and see how we can offer, you know, make sure we're offering it to more than just our third grade students with that competition. But otherwise, you know, open to ideas and finding and supporting ways to really help to support our gifted learners and our teachers and support this role and continue our wonderful trajectory and enhancement of our gifted learners here in Strongsville City Schools. So thank you.
Questions for Lauren?
I have a comment.
I know you do.
Did you say you have been here for three months?
I have, yes.
I have to say, Lauren, you have done a lot in three months.
It's been enjoyable, I've enjoyed it.
The amount of engagement and support that you have provided is exceptional. The collaboration with the staff, you're obviously excited and motivated yourself and that's going to motivate staff, students and parents. You're dynamic, infectious, future planning, and this all happened in three months?
It did.
Congratulations.
Aw, thank you, I appreciate that. When you, when you love what you do, you know, you enjoy going to work, so enjoy, enjoy doing it.
I do have one other comment though, and I thank you for the fine presentation. But during our board meetings and during presentations, we often use acronyms. Would it be good at some point, I mean, we, we form acronyms, acronyms everywhere, like today. But if I'm a person watching what we're talking about, do I know what ESAR means? Do I know what certain acronyms mean? If they're not common acronyms, there are some common ones. Do we list any of those? Or can we, in the future, have a small list of basic acronyms listed on our website so that people would understand with a little bit, just a brief comment about what it actually means? Because I think we use them a lot.
Yeah, we, we do have one that we created about a year ago, so that's something John, we could put out there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Lauren?
I have one question. So I look at what you're, a lot of your, a lot of what you're doing is, is getting your feet wet, starting relationships, things like that. A lot of what you're doing is putting out resources. How do you anticipate in a year, in two years, et cetera, being able to measure what resources are working, what are not? Where, where is adoption going well, where is it not?
It's a good question.
But necessarily a definitive answer now, but it's something I'm thinking about.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's great. I definitely think, as you mentioned, the relationship piece. And I think, I would hope that that relationship piece with a lot of our, our teachers and administrators would help support that answer and being able to, you know, that's a Google form that we send out to get that feedback from them. And then also our test scores, you know, how, like if we do a textbook adoption specifically for gifted intervention specialists and our gifted learners, I would hope to see a lot of these numbers, especially that we saw that 48th percentile. We shouldn't be seeing that. So I think that that would hopefully quantify and qualify, you know, how, what we're doing is actually working. And I would hope that the relationship, relationship piece would also provide that comfortability and providing that feedback to us of where we could help support them more within that.
Appreciate it. I echo John's comments.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
As we conclude with Lauren's part, although not on the agenda, a couple of items that I would like to share with the board. The first one, let me share my screen. Is here. So we have a new business that is moving in and I'll expand. So this is Strongsville Middle School. And then if you're, if you're facing the middle school north, there's the Orthodox and then there's a shopping center here. So there, there's a new business that has moved into there or planning to move in. It's called the Furry Tail Shack. So the, the, the business is.
What was the name again?
Furry Tail Shack, dog walking, dog daycare, dog services. But as they bought the property, there is no location for the dogs that are there to go to the bathroom. So the only property that abuts the building is our property from the middle school. So you can see if you orient yourself, there's our football field, there's the retention pond and there's a grassy area and trees. So the, the person who is leasing that, those units there has reached out and said, would we be willing to allow them to use, as you can kind of see by the yellow grid there, 25 by 45 foot area that the owner would like to put a fence on our property and then utilize that property for her business for the dogs to use the bathroom. So, you know, that's something that I wanted to bring to the board. What we've done in the past is that we have, we do have land leases with other organizations within the community. So we have a land lease currently at the, for the Allen property with the city that they could use it for rec fields. We have a land lease at the old Albion Middle School property with the Cleveland Football Club and Strongsville Lacrosse Association. But basically they'll say, what they say is, here's the area or what you can utilize. Here's how you can utilize it. If anything is put on the property, like a fence, it has to be approved by the superintendent. And then at any time, should we want that property back, we will give you 30-day notice and that property would be returned to the district. So as I take a look at this property, it's, it's not a usable piece of property in terms of we're going to put something there or utilizing it, utilize it. It's just green space for us. If it's going to help out a local business, I'm comfortable with it. I just wanted to bring it to the board and get your blessing of whether I can move forward with a lease agreement for this piece of property and then ultimately it would come to you for approval. I, I know the owner reached out, they're looking to open sometime after Thanksgiving. I'm not sure if we can meet that timeline with as quickly as she needs, but at least we can move forward. So need some guidance from, any feedback or? All right.
I was going to say, the only thing, the only, obviously we would want to make sure to take care of any environmental issues or whatever and ultimately protect that. It's, if, if for some reason in the future, we would need to have that land for some use, we have the ability to do that. And then I would talk to Jessica to see if there's any detention opportunities that we can collaborate with.
Yeah, I'll let you know how that conversation goes. All right. The second thing that I would like to share with you that's not on the agenda is that, as, as you know, I've updated the board, that we have an air handler unit at Surhrar Elementary that started to fail. It takes care of the cafeteria, the kitchen, the gym, some of the office areas, some of the front classrooms. It started to fail, it's, it's good enough to get us through this season. But in the summertime specifically for air conditioning, it needs to be repaired. One of the things that we're challenged with is we, we can't repair it. The way it was installed and built, it's the original air handler for one of the original air handlers from the building. The roof was built around it, the drip pan is failing, we're patching it, but it's not keeping and we can't get in there because the roof is built around it. So next meeting, Mr. Brechner will be here. He will go through the summer or the capital improvement projects that are on pace for this summer. And then kind of the cadence of when we're going to be bringing those to the board for approval. But one of them with the pandemic, with, you know, ESAR, the Educational Elementary and Secondary School Recovery Act. I'm close, that may not be exact, but that's, that's close enough. There's a lot of funds out there and you can use those funds for capital improvement projects. So there's a, there's a higher demand, there's, you know, we know the logistical issues we're seeing in our country right now with materials. So companies are, are starting to change the way they work with school districts. So there's a company called Gardner. Gardner has done work with us, they did the Chapman HVAC replacement, they did a part of it at Maraski. There's the Ohio School Council, which they do a bidding process and a vetting process and Gardner is one of their preferred companies. So what Gardner has said is, and when we, we had communication with Gardner, is that we will start to engineer the project so that we can give you an accurate cost so that you could take it to the board for approval. However, we can't do all of this engineering and then you say, hey, we're going to go with somebody else and not have any compensation for it. So what Gardner has asked for is a signature of a letter of intent that if the district goes with Gardner, there would be no additional cost. But if the district goes with a company other than Gardner, that we would owe Gardner $15,000. Now that does not require board approval because it's less than the $25,000 limit. But I wanted to let you know because that letter of intent is associated with a larger expense, which is the replacement of an air handler at, at Surhrar Elementary. So, so what I'm asking for tonight is, is consensus and understanding that I can sign the letter of intent with Gardner, that will start the engineering for the project. Steve will bring the project, the full project to the board for approval at a future board meeting. And if the board decides to go in a different direction, then we would have to pay Gardner $15,000. If the board says, no, we're good with the project, we're good with Gardner, who's Ohio School Council approved vendor, then there would be no additional cost for the engineering. So just clarity on what I just explained, does that make sense? Okay. So any questions, feedback, ultimately looking for direction if I'm okay to sign this letter of intent?
Are we using them again because we've had success with them in the past? Have we looked at other companies, is there more backstory, I guess?
So we, we're recommending to use them because, first of all, when you take a look at the Ohio School Council, they've looked at vendors all across and they've said that this is, you know, what's the verbiage, best value?
It needs to be bid. So a project that needs to be bid and the Ohio School Council does that bidding process. So it's in a cooperative purchase, it's in the cooperative purchase agreement that we have with, by joining the Ohio School Council where they're doing the bidding process for the school issues.
Are there other companies that also we could use?
We could go out to bid ourselves.
But this is the only one that's in this?
That I can't answer, Steve can answer. That part of, if Gardner's the only vendor with the Ohio School Council.
So we've done work with them before, they've done good work for us.
I believe they did the Chapman when we converted from electric to gas. Gardner did that conversion over at Chapman Elementary.
And when we did the Marat, when we did the Best of You project, we needed to do some HVAC work at Maraski and they, they did that as well. So in taking a look at, you know, that they're their preferred vendor, the bidding process that they've gone through, the price and the quality of work, that, that has been a benefit to us. There have been, and I don't want to speak specifically about companies, but there, there have been, when you go for a bid process, not that you have to take the lowest bid, it's the best value or that's the. But there have been opportunities. Yeah, so there have been opportunities where maybe it has been the best value, but the follow-up and the follow-through has not been of the level that, that we've been accustomed to with some of our other business partners. So Gardner's been somebody that they know our district, they know our system and they've done quality work. And so that, it, it's kind of, if you take a look at Vasco, Vasco's another company in this OSC, you know, preferred vendor and the bidding process. They've done our asphalt, they've done our turf fields, they've done a lot of work and have a consistent quality that has been successful.
The bigger, the bigger issue that I think we're going to have to, that we're addressing here and we're going to continue to have to address is that with the side effects of the pandemic, every vendor, every contractor like this, their biggest issue is, is if they take a book of business, they're going to need to deliver on it. And all of the, all of the general construction vendors are having trouble with that, which, which mimics the issues we're having economy-wide. I think the reason, A, I'm comfortable with, with proceeding, we're going to have a time crunch. If we don't do this now, we wanted this work done in the summer. And if we don't start to move, we're going to find ourselves in a position where we haven't done the, the preparation necessary to get it done in the, in the summer. So that's critical for me. I'm, I can tee up the conversation I want to have with Steve is just making sure we're very clear that we're, we're putting a tremendous amount of capital into repairing this and at the same time, we have a elementary school project. And I just want to make sure we're not being penny wise, pound foolish. But as far as direction, you have my direction, that we need to get this done so we can, you know, I don't want to be here next school year and we have water running down walls and things like that because we weren't able to get the project done. Does anyone disagree?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miko. With that, that concludes my report unless there's questions for me.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Cameron? Next on our agenda is Board of Education Other. I had one topic I wanted to talk with the board about. At a previous meeting, we discussed next year, adjusting our calendar for meetings. So at that time, we said it makes sense, it would allow George the ability to bring to the board better, more actionable information. And so this is just a reminder, act now or forever, hold your peace. But what we will, what we will tee up is that in our December meeting, we have to pick a date for an organizational meeting. And so we'll keep that at that first week Thursday, which is January 6th, I think, 7th? We'll we'll check the calendar before that time, but we'll need to set that meeting at in at our December meeting. And so we'll keep that January timeframe, but in-
January 6th.
January 6th, excellent. So we'll keep that so that we have our organizational meeting early. When we adopt our calendar, we intend to make our meetings the second and fourth Thursday going forward. So that's my Board of Education Other. Does anybody have any other others? We do have need for executive session on the topics of?
To review negotiations with public employees and to consider matters required to be kept confidential.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Kropinski. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And we will go into executive session at 8:40. We have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention and have a good week.